We're gonna go ahead and get started. Like to welcome Otis Washington, he's gonna come and open us up in prayer. So Otis, if you'll come on.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity, Lord God, to gather here, Lord God, to say, Lord, your blessings upon our city leaders, Lord God. Lord, we ask God that you just give them the wisdom, the insight, Lord God, to conduct the business of this city, Lord God. Lord, we thank you for the blessings and the progress that we see, Lord God, and we just ask that that continue, Lord God. Lord, we ask God that you bless them, Lord God, our leaders, Lord God, you bless their families, God, you bless their endeavors, Lord God. Lord, would you just continue to bless this city, God, that we see it progress, Lord God? And Lord, we just thank you, things in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, like to welcome everybody here today. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number one on the agenda, public hearing, a hearing to receive public comments on the proposed issuance of an alcohol license to Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar. Alcohol committee recommended conditional approval of the license.
Anybody here to speak for it or against it? I make a motion, we adopt it.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve the license.
Got a motion and a second to approve Applebee's license? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, a hearing to receive public comments on the proposed issuance of an alcohol license to Toki Sushi Thai Grill and Restaurant. It's an ownership change. The alcohol committee has recommended conditional approval of the license.
Mr. Safe right?
Yeah, nothing.
Okay.
I tried to go in this morning and they weren't, wouldn't come to the door if they were there. So I'll have to go back to the boardroom and meet today to see if they've everything done. They were supposed to call me yesterday morning and said they had it done, I never heard from them. So I went up there this morning and I couldn't get an answer.
Okay, what the previous ownership of Toki Restaurant has sold and just in a matter of Ron's routine restaurant inspections, he discovered that their cooking hood and suppression system needed, was a malfunction, it just had not been updated, is that correct?
It's been done annually and I haven't done it.
Inspection. So I just recommend that we conditionally approve this license and I will not approve the approval letter to the state until they comply with what Mr. Safe right requires.
Second.
Hearing publicly.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the hearing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now then, conditionally approve the license.
I make a motion to conditionally approve.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carried. Okay, ordinances and resolutions, ordinance 2017-09, amending ordinance 2017-02, the logging ordinance.
Just the topic of our work session we just had. What has changed was the section four subsection A of the permitting requirement of the logging ordinance, in addition to the $50 permit fee, it required a deposit of $5,000 to cover the cost of the city hired forester. If that money is not used in its entirety, the unused portion will be refunded to the log- logger.
Motion to amend.
Second.
We need to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second it.
Yes.
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 Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Got a motion to adopt the amendment and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, ordinance 2017-10, establishing a three-way stop at the intersection of Quail Hollow Road and Quail Hollow Drive.
Pass these out. I had it originally, I misunderstood evidently, I thought it was a three-way stop, but I was informed once I got to the meeting, it was a two-way, so I changed it. I don't know if we got enough copies for everybody, but... Make a motion to suspend rules.
It still says three-way stop, sorry, at the top.
It did.
It still says three-way.
I'll correct it if, or y'all can carry it over, or whatever you wish to do, it doesn't have to be adopted.
It's basically the Y there, right? So it looks kinda like three ways, but it's stopped one way now and you just turn left or come out and turn right and you have to stop coming toward Highway 11. And it's become quite of an issue there, people going out Quail Hollow Road that turn into Quail Hollow, they've got the right of way, but people are coming down. So it's basically decided that if everybody had to stop, that would probably lessen the likelihood of somebody getting hit head-on there. So it's a, it's kind of a Y intersection, but it would be, you'd actually stop.
Wait, this is written, coming off of Quail Hollow Drive, you have to stop.
Alright, you still gonna let them turn left?
Go in, go in in an easterly direction on Quail Hollow Road, you would be required to stop. Coming in on Quail Hollow Road, going in a westerly direction, you have the right of way.
Alright, so you wouldn't be stopping going into Quail Hollow, just coming out?
Correct.
Okay, so it's actually just adding one stop sign, so it's two?
Two stops, two-way stop.
And to go along with this, when we start paving, we're gonna do some work and make that more of a, more of a right angle turn.
A T, kind of a, yeah.
It's a Y now, we're gonna turn it into a T. We found out that it's not actually on the right of way, so we're moving it over on the right of way and turn it into a T.
Alright, that'll be better.
Randy, have there been any accidents up there because of the way it is now?
Nothing that I could really come to mind.
We had this discussion back several years.
Well, there've been some near misses lately. Quite a few.
You know, I don't know how you propose changing it, but you know, just ordinarily, the road going straight ahead is one has a right of way, one going towards the interstate, the dead end part of it.
Yeah, the westbound.
Right, it'll, it'll still be open.
It'll still have right of way.
The eastbound on Quail Hollow Drive. Road would be stop and then Quail Hollow Drive would be stop.
Right now, there's already a stop sign on the eastbound.
Eastbound, Quail Hollow Road has a...
That's what's happening, people running the stop sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
The people that are coming out of Quail Hollow, turning right, are nearly getting hit by people coming out of the Quail Hollow Road that are not stopping, but it's also been dangerous by the people turning left into Quail Hollow, are nearly getting hit by people coming. So it's primarily, the problem is mostly coming toward 11, the eastbound traffic. But that's a stop sign there already, so if you stop them coming out of Quail Hollow, that would at least give those people, they'd have to stop and look good before they pull out, instead of just coming out. Even though they got the right of way, there've been some near misses lately.
Slow down enough to dodge.
Yeah.
Randy, have you looked at this lately?
I know where it is, yeah.
Yeah, but you, you know the problem we're having up there?
There used to be a, probably what, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, there was two stop signs there. I don't know how they're taking that.
So we're going back to the way it used to be.
I'm good with the stop signs, I have a problem with them.
Make a motion to suspend rules.
Second. Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Motion to adopt ordinance.
Got a motion to adopt this ordinance?
That's correct.
Got a second? Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Resolution 2017-29, accepting the low bid for Public Works Surplus Bulldozer.
Y'all know at the last council meeting, you authorized the surplusing of a Public Works Bulldozer. Subsequent to that, we advertised in the Times Journal for sealed bids through May the 30th at 4:00 PM. Mayor and I opened bids at 9:00 the next morning with two bids submitted, you can see the results of that on the first resolution. Danny Wagner bid $12,100, Alton Scott Woodall bid $12,646.42. So I recommend that we adopt this ordinance, accepting the low bid.
Resolution. I make a motion to accept the high bid.
I'll second.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Okay.
That's $2,600, I think, above our reserve, wasn't it?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it was advertised with $10,000.
Better selling it than trading it in.
So we got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain, I had a relative submitted a bid and I'm gonna abstain from
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, resolution 2017-30, rescinding, repealing, and replacing resolution 2013-8, establishing rules for overtime pay, holiday pay, etc.
This deals primarily with the ongoing conversation that we've had with the police department in regards to their work period not coinciding with the pay period. I think Wade, Brian, and Red had met with them on several occasions. They have since changed, beginning yesterday, changed their work schedule to a two-week work schedule, as well as their days on, days off, to coincide with the work period, which will not result in automatic overtime, just by working your normal shift. And also, there were some other changes made, re-establishing the five-week vacation period for a 25-year, 25 years of service.
On the completion of the 25th year, yeah.
Cashed-out value now corresponds with the value awarded for vacation. Overtime, one of the overtime requirements had been, it was overtime actually worked beyond a certain amount before you got any overtime paid. Now, the vacation penalty, if you wanna call it that, has been removed. If you're on vacation, you come in and work, you get paid overtime for that day's work. So, I think, was there anything else, Wade, that we, that's the gist of it?
That's pretty much the gist of it. We took that first part out about declaring a work period and just went to the work, or the work, we left the work week out, went to work period, as FLSA requires. I'd like to congratulate the guys in the police department for bearing with us on this. It's been an issue, it's turned into a real issue with accounting up here, trying to get the new software going and trying to have this three-week pay cycle when you got a two-week pay period. So there's always a week hanging out there that everybody had to do the extra math on. So this should simplify everything. Guys in the police department and gals, when they work their shift, they're gonna get a two-week pay period. If they work over, they get paid over. It simplified overtime quite a bit, gives them the ability to get that overtime in a timely fashion. The fire department basically is staying like it was as far as their shift, they still go 28 days, and then they get their overtime once their numbers are met. But they also don't have to lose the ability of getting overtime if they had some time in that 28 days, but had a vacation break there. So the vacation penalty, is what I called it, has been removed. So now, sick leave still counts against a break of service like it always has, but this also reinstates the fifth week, and I think the mayor did some research on this a couple of months ago, and it's not really that many people, it's gonna affect, a lot of our folks are retiring out now when they get 25, so it shouldn't really be a detriment. This is gonna cost the city a little bit of money, but it gives us five more months of this fiscal year to see what it's actually gonna do and then helps us budget for next year. So, all in all, I think it's, it's a good deal and I'd make a motion, we adopt this resolution.
And this also, this also applies not just to fire and police, this is several departments at that.
This streamlines it for everybody. Basically, hours worked above your normal scheduled hours for everybody now is overtime.
And there was a lot of thought and work went into putting this all together, trying to make sure it's the best fit for the city and the best fit for our employees, 'cause we want, we wanna take care of our employees.
You know, it's only right for a person works, you know, overtime in a given two-week period that they be compensated for. And if they're on the fifth week for vacation, I understand, is two employees in the police department, that would affect, you know, is this not gonna affect that many people citywide, but it's a good incentive for a person to stay on.
Exactly.
Able employee.
Right.
Well, my thought was, was if, you know, when they were hired in, that's what they got, and then they got it pulled away from them.
That's pretty much the way everybody was working until 2013, and then this crew came in under a new set of guidelines, but the old heads were working under that fifth week and didn't get it, so that'll, that'll fix that, and I'm glad to see this get done. Appreciate y'all working on it like you did and having all the meetings, Jessica gave us a lot of information there from three years ago and comparing stuff to then and now, and I hope this'll simplify things for everybody concerned, and we should be able to rescind that event pay deal now that this is done, but we can take that up the 20th if you want to.
And I'll second your motion.
Thanks, sir.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
That on the next agenda to rescind that. Event pay, yeah.
Event, yeah.
Okay, resolution 2017-31, authorizing agreement with Aldott for resurfacing project in the sewer rehab area.
This has to do with the $100,000 that the state has pledged to provide to the city for helping offset the cost of repaving the sewer rehab area up on Forest, Alabama Grand.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, new business, consideration for a $1,000 appropriation to the Fort Payne High School fishing team to help offset tournament expenses.
Head worm needs to come up and speak.
I've been telling everybody, but not a worm. I'm saying something different, sure.
Our fishing team's done a lot of traveling this year, and we've got our final, world finals coming up, I've got several anglers that's going to fish that, but with the schedule we've had this past year, we've been to Montgomery and fixed, we've been to Lake Martin, Alexandria City, which was last weekend for our state championship. We've been to Logan Martin, we did fish a couple of local tournaments, Wice Lake and Nellie Henry. And anyways, we're just running short of funds and this is our last final tournament we've got this year and one more year that this will be. And this tournament we're going to fish is what they call the world finals, they're fishing for no less than an $8,000 scholarship, you know, if they win it.
Where is it?
It's at Pickwick, over in Florence. It's a four-day tournament, and we folded around this year, we normally, normally book our rooms and stuff at the state parks early, and we folded around, didn't do that this year, and so we've ended up at the lodge, which we try to, anywhere we go, we try to stay in the state park, which helps all of our city employees on their retirement stuff, but, and this money, of course, you know, goes for lodging, food, and also gas and stuff, and I always encourage all my boat anglers to go to the local businesses here in Fort Payne, get their gas and their boat and stuff before they ever leave town with you. We try to spend all we can here local, you know, but we would appreciate the financial help. We're supposed to have it this year and one more year in Florence.
Y'all have done this before.
I most appropriately appropriated.
I wanna thank you for saving 50 last year.
Last year or year before?
I think year before last and last year, I think.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve this.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks for what you do, Stan.
On behalf of the fishing team, you know, they appreciate it, it's kinda short notice and I, you know, I could've had a bunch of them here today.
That's alright.
You know, I've seen a lot of good things come out of this, you know, scholarships, going on to college and doing well, and we appreciate that.
I know you got some helpers, but you're kinda the lead helper on this, and I appreciate you being the mentor to these young guys and gals.
I enjoy doing it, I enjoy spending my time.
It's a good program.
Get some out of the office for a few days, too.
Yeah.
Hang with some fish.
Alright, and as Rocky brought to my attention, while we're spending money, we need to go ahead and hire this forester to work with our logging ordinance.
I would be glad to make the motion that we hire Tim Chestnut to be our forester.
I agree, I'll second, I sure say I agree.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to hire Tim as our forester? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
I'd just like to say that this, like we talked about, this sorta encourages the landowner to manage their property better, and in our meeting with him, I thought he was the great choice for us, so, I just, in case anybody didn't understand what we're doing exactly.
Yeah, basically, it's to enforce the, the ordinance is carried out the way it should be carried out and, and everything stays the way.
Well, we had the first two permits pulled, we had the state forester do the inspections for us, and then he's not allowed to do it anymore, so we had to get a forester that was available, and we looked at a couple, and Tim seems to be the guy for the job, and I feel confident he'll come in and do a good job for the property owner and the city, and that's, that's all you can ask for, try to take care of it and manage our resources properly and allow people to do what they need to do on their property, so we're gonna try to proceed on with this and do it in a proper fashion.
Okay, road tax information. Treasurer Moses requests the council to be informed of the following reimbursements to the general fund. Highway and traffic safety funds, $138,428.30 for street and road purposes, as well as light, labor, and benefits. Seven cent gas tax fund, $54,725 reimbursement for equipment. Okay.
We typically do this annually, we keep that 10 concept logs and turns them into me, and then when the general fund needs reimbursement for it, we put it all in one lump sum. It doesn't have to really be approved, 'cause we're spending it on what it's meant to be spent for, it's just supposed to be reflected in the minutes to be put in the file.
Okay. Alright, number nine, lease, approve the lease between the city of Fort Payne and the Fort Payne Depot Museum for the small building located at 509 Galt Avenue North, adjacent to the MapCo Station at Fifth Street and Galt Avenue North.
Finally.
Yeah.
Too long enough. This is on the little building that's next to the MapCo, we're gonna let Russell Gully use part of it as Big Will's Arts Council office, and also, we're gonna refurbish the bathrooms in that little building, which will be used for public use and also for the depot. They don't have much of a bathroom facility, so it'll, it'll be a dual purpose.
How long will the lease fall?
Two years. No money.
Well, it's a two-year lease for nothing, and we may get it to the end of two years if everything goes well, based on our improvements.
With the two-year extension?
Yeah. The good thing about this is it gives us public restrooms.
That's right.
They're at the depot for events there, and then we got them in the park, and then we got them at the walking track, and then we got them at the road provision. So this gives us four sets of public restrooms, two on each side of the track there for big events. Save us on some porta potties, hopefully.
You made a motion on this? I'll make a motion.
There we have a motion, do we have a second? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Maybe they won't get autora like some bathrooms.
Yeah, we hope not.
Okay, number 10, policies and procedures amendment. The payroll procedure section adopted April 18th, 2017, is part of the parcel of the policies and procedures recommendation from the Alabama Department of Public Examiners is hereby amended as follows.
As y'all recall, you adopted the policies and procedures a meeting or so ago, that was boilerplate language that the Department of Examiners had provided with us a couple, three years ago. It didn't accurately reflect what we actually do, you know, on ordinary and routine matters like what we've got to in the mayor's personnel report today, y'all don't approve them, you don't sign off on action forms, it's just a matter of ordinary course of business. Anything outside of that, whether it's non-standard promotion, non-standard pay raise, the committees are always involved with it, and now it's just simply, basically codifying the fact that you will sign the action forms as well as the mayor and the department.
And I see that as part of our job, is being on the committee.
Right.
Being involved and understanding what's going on, so I'll make a motion that we accept.
Second. They got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. And I would like to say on that as well, encourage you, department heads, to utilize your committee members and all that you do, and I think everybody does that, and that works so much better than, you know, us being in the dark. We know what's going on and we know, you know, what, what's happening in that department, so please utilize each one of us on your committee and what's, what's going on.
We'll be talking to everybody this month about budget issues, so you should be getting those from Jessica as far as your, your stuff, and then we've talked a little bit about capital stuff, so we'd like to get that stuff ironed out this month where we can have our first phase in by the end of the month.
The only change that I see that, right now, the committee men or women are signing the, any of these changes that are out of ordinary, if I do this in the way that it's written, that still needs to be done, but it'll need to be presented at the council meeting the next council to be approved by the whole council, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, just wanna be sure.
Number 11, consideration for settlement with Fort Payne Improvement Authority for $10,603.22 in the undercharges for the Little League Baseball field lights.
Y'all recall, a few weeks ago, Mike Shire, new manager of the Improvement Authority, met with you concerning some undercharges at Sports Complex Little League Baseball Field. Found the meter that was not working at all, came back with a estimated bill of $16,000 and change, and I think the mayor, some of y'all had questioned about some of the overcharges that the city had had, and Mike went back and did a calculation, and I think it's the last, last page in your packet here, he's did some refiguring, came back with an amount of $10,603.22, which I think is probably about as reasonable amount as we're gonna get.
Like, that was the lights that Johnny, the mayor, had questioned about, we got charged for the towers for the airport that went away. I think it's as good as we're gonna get, I'd make a motion, go ahead and take care of that.
Johnny, you may know, are we paying a demand charge on that?
There was one on that, and that was, that was part of the argument I had, I didn't wanna pay a demand charge, 'cause...
Right.
That might be part of it. I think this is, this is probably about right, as far as what we've used since 2012. I talked to Mike Shire a little earlier today, and he said he'd work with us any way we can if we wanna pay him out monthly payments or something, so Jessica or Andy, somebody get with him, and I think I'd just be proud to get some of the money back.
But are we being charged going forward, or are we being charged a demand fee?
They just demand... They just demand on it, the way I read that. Yes. And I don't totally agree with that, but...
Well, I would like... I don't mean to sound like I'm wanting to hold this hostage, but I'd like to see us have more discussion about this demand fee.
Well, on the streetlights in particular, there's been a demand charge forever on it, and as we've been changing these lights over to LED and putting them in our name, that demand charge is going away. And this could be, I assume, that we could do these lights the same.
They've got a... Well, I know how it used to be. I don't know if it's that way anymore, but they had a Class 50 deal, which was the big users, and all of those were demand. Now, demand was charged... You charge, and it sticks with you for a year. And I really can't see it anymore. That's something we could probably negotiate with them and see if we could get out of paying that. It's just something they've always done. And I never did totally understand it when I worked there.
Well, the demand and the number of lights needs to be resolved with them.
They turn those babies on, it dims the power somewhere else. So they charge you for that surge on the system. I think that's being looked into. We're trying to reconcile that.
Regardless, though, we owe them this amount. And so we can... This is separate than the demand and the number of lights, so as long as we address that.
Discussion, why not include this in the discussion before we pay it?
I don't have a problem with discussing with them, 'cause I don't really...
I think we've already discussed it with them, and he went back and sharpened his pencil, $6,000, and if we want to discuss future stuff, fine, but, you know, I'm forgetting this part over with, and then we can renegotiate with them, but we're kind of in a position where they say we owe it, and we can't prove we didn't.
They may be, too. Once we finish the streetlight program, we may have some adjustments on it, 'cause there may be lights that we're being built for that just aren't there. I mean, we'll find that. Once we're through with it, it'll be a simple matter to find what's left on their books.
There's always gonna be several, so, you know, we're gonna have to...
The charge is going the other direction at that particular point.
We're about eight hundred lights different right now from what we've counted. One of the things I found out today, all the lights in the school campuses are city streetlights, which when we change those out, question I have for y'all, y'all want to just... I guess y'all want to keep paying it, but y'all want to change them out with all standard lights, put eighty-eight watt throughout the campus, or try to match what they've got there. They're all mismatched right now.
I think we probably need to look at wattage and that type of thing, 'cause some of them may not be bright enough. Those at Will's Valley, they wasn't bright enough when this was put in, so you probably go back with LED.
They're gonna maintain the ones on the school side.
Yeah.
The ones on the red side are gonna be ours, which that was another one. They were charging us an annual charge, about a hundred and fifty dollars a month, actually what they were charging us for the uses of lights. They've donated those to the city, so that charge will... It'll be power usage on it. And we're gonna try to switch those over to some small LED bulbs, and they won't be included with the streetlight charges, but they're still gonna save money, and we've still got enough in that account, so... If y'all agree, we'll go ahead and buy the lights, 'cause it's gonna save money, and we'll still be under our budget reasons.
And we need to, I mean...
The lights on the school campuses, it looks like they're about forty-five.
We're actually paying for seven hundred and something more than what you think we actually have.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be able to know. We've got two crews working this week trying to get... We'll try to do it the next two weeks. If we can get those put up, all the lights that we know belong to the city, and then if they still have the seven hundred and seventy, that's when we can discuss taking that off the field and the reimbursement.
So we actually have a motion on the table. I think Wade made to go ahead and accept that, so the $10,603. So, do we have a second?
I'll second it. I think we need to go ahead and get that out of the way. And then, it shows good faith. Yeah, it shows good faith, and then it'll be up to them to prove, right? The streetlight issue, if we've counted them, it'd be up to them to prove which ones we owe them for.
If you and Red get Mike and see about removing that demand charge from those lights at the Sports Complex.
We can do that.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? A motion carried. Okay. Number 12, discussion about events at the Coal and Iron Building and when alcohol beverages will be available.
There had been a question come up a few weeks ago after the event that was held in the park, some kind of dinner, I think. High school kids, culinary school, prepared for a Main Street event. And questions had arisen about whether or not alcohol should have been served at the Coal and Iron Building. And contemporaneously with that event, and I thought the only fair thing for Mike was to be, for y'all to issue him some guidelines, so he's not flapping in the breeze and doing something that he don't know that he shouldn't be doing, so...
Well, I think we need to define what an event is, or a private... I mean, to me, it needs to be a private event with someone who's rented the building. That was the purpose of that initially, as I understood it.
That's what I was understanding.
Right. And I know Main Street had rented that, or reserved that night in case there was rain, but we'd been asked not to serve alcohol at that event. And it needs... If something like that is going to be requested for it to be open, to me, it needs to be by the event, whoever the event person was. And I would think it needs to go through whoever is in charge of the event for us, like Victoria, or whomever's over, you know, has scheduled the event. To me, the event goes through a process. It needs then Victoria, whomever's in charge of that venue, needs to request Mike have it open. That's just my suggestion.
Was that event, did they start out asking to serve alcohol, and then they decided not to, or...
Someone from our board did ask as far... This is all hearsay, because I don't know. Someone from our board did ask, sorry, for it to serve alcohol, but I don't think she understood that we'd been asked by the school not to serve it. And it was my understanding that Connie Fuller, who was our director, had spoken to Mike, I don't know, and asked him not to serve. So I understand there could be some confusion there, and I think Main Street as a board needs to clarify who schedules those things and makes those requests, but if we start opening that building, because to me, the night of that event, it was open to the public. It wasn't open just to people at that event. There were people that went in there that were not at the Main Street event. We were operating as a business, and it's not a business. But you can tell me I'm wrong, but that's how I feel.
You know, it's a special event's license, and it's where you have back night, it's where it's like that, and I... I understand kind of we're going to throw, we live the kind of getting in line, but still, I don't get picky today.
I understand, but I just feel like, from the citizen's viewpoint, a lot of times, it's viewed as, well, the city can skirt by the law, but the other businesses can't. You know, they follow the rules and do all these things. Like, I've had people come up and ask me about the signage, about putting the Budweiser sign out. I mean, I don't really have a big issue with that, but no other business can do that. So, it's just viewed sometimes as the city not following what every other business has been given to follow, and I just... I think the city should hold themselves at a higher, in a higher regard than businesses. I just think we have to be careful.
Well, any question about Thursday or Boom Days?
I think it's basically a scheduled event.
Yeah, if it's a scheduled event at the...
If it's a private event in the building, or a city-sponsored event, like Boom Days or Thursday, I don't think that's an issue. I think this was just a miscommunication by one person who
Right.
got the bar open, and everybody else didn't want the bar open, and Mike opened the bar 'cause he's asked to.
Right.
It's not on him to figure out who didn't communicate with her. We just don't want this to happen again.
Right.
Well, we need to create a process, I think.
There needs to be guidelines.
And a definition of what an event is, to me.
Because actually, it's not fair to our businesses in town if we have a bar opened up down, you know, at the Coal and Iron Building, and there's just...
Just for the sake of having a bar.
Right.
I think having alcohol at that building was basically, it was set up for, to keep people coming in and doing things that got out of control. We're using the building. We're taking care of it. Mike's been very responsible with that. And then they also have the license at the Road Pavilion, have events over there. They have back night on Thursday or whatever. And then, what do we do at the country club? Do we sell there, or do we allow them to bring?
No, we don't have a license at the country club.
Okay, so we don't allow anything or do anything? I didn't ask that, never mind.
I think we don't sell anything.
No, we don't sell anything.
Yes. Which is a private event.
Right, that's correct, okay.
Not open to the public.
Victoria asked me today, Thursday, y'all got an event at Coal and Iron, that I've been asked to serve out, okay? So, does that mean that I can't post on my Facebook, say that there's a Main Street event Thursday night? Everybody come down?
I don't think if it's open to the public, you should be able to...
That is not the... You can do that, because that is, we have a special event license. When you can advertise is what Johnny and the mayor went to Montgomery a couple, three years ago and found out, we've operated on the assumption for years that you couldn't BYOB. Well, the powers that be said, yeah, you can, under a few conditions. Limited in attendance, no money changes hands.
Right. So at the country club, they can bring things.
Yes.
It's for their private event. It's on city property, but they can bring it and give it away. They can't sell it.
Right.
And we don't sell it at the country club, but we can sell it at the Road Pavilion.
Yeah, we have license.
Because we have license for that. I think as long as it's tied to an event, and since we partner with Main Street, I don't think that's an issue. As long as it's a sanctioned event, and if we're sanctioned...
And it's in that building.
Yeah.
Well, apparently, the one before that brought this up, the Main Street deal that was in the park, apparently, it was, just like somebody said a little bit ago, just a misunderstanding.
It was. It was an honest mistake.
Yeah.
I don't think the person that asked for the bar to be opened knew that that conversation had taken place, that they didn't want alcohol if the children were serving food. And they didn't go in there to serve food anyway, so they never... The children were never in the Coal and Iron Building, but the bar got opened up, 'cause it was asked to be opened up, but it was a miscommunication. We just want to make sure that...
It just brought up something we've never talked about.
Right.
And defined.
Well, it's not on Mike. He did what he's asked to do.
Right.
The audience is doing okay. We just want to make sure that everybody understands what an event is, and basically, it's anything that's city sanctioned, or if it's a private event and it's rented, and they want the bar facilities, then that's fine. That's included in that. So I think we just need to make sure that we understand what's a sanctioned event. If somebody just wants to go up there and have a private get-together to open the bar, I don't think that's necessarily a sanctioned event.
Main Street is gonna have a program. They need to designate a contact person.
I would think that'd be Tim from here on out, since they've got a director now. I think he would be the person to speak for that, and that would be after consensus of the board.
But I still almost think it should come through Victoria. When they call and rent, they need to say, I need alcohol, and then Victoria, or reserve the building.
Right.
Whenever someone calls Victoria, whether it's a wedding event or whatever, if it has anything to do with alcohol, I tell her to have them call me. I will negotiate the alcohol.
Right.
Not her. That's between me and Eddie. I've dealt with this. I tell them what they can do, what they can't do, and that type of stuff, what the cost is going to be.
Right.
That way, it doesn't... We don't have any confusion about what's going on.
Not any miscommunication.
Alcohol sales at the city of Fort Payne, places that we have a license, they have to deal with it.
Right.
I just don't want Mike feeling like he's throwing darts at a dartboard on what he can't keep...
Right, and then I think this clarifies, hopefully, things like that from happening again. Whoever's the designated person reserving the building needs to be able to converse with him, and he knows that he's talking to the right person. And if it's a Main Street deal, it needs to be Tim, I would think, since he's a director, after consensus of the board. And the other functions are there. If they're private events, it's whoever sets it up.
And if it was a chamber, or...
If, you know, and there's been some communication issues here lately between the chamber and Main Street about who was sponsoring this or that, and, you know, we just... If Chamber's gonna sponsor something, I think, as long as she's there, it'd be Carol, and then whoever takes her place would be the key person to deal with. I think we just gotta get it where Mike knows who he's talking to, is dealing on good faith. And this is good faith. It's just miscommunication.
Right, I agree.
So, I think it...
We're having a lot of trouble to go in our buildings. A lot of people are seeing the building now, and I think it's increased our rent, as far as weddings and things along that line. All that stuff is picking up. Everybody loves the building, so...
Our class reunion was in there, and it went off great. I hate it that it rained out Thursday, but we had a great time, and we had a lot of people that are talking about renting it for future venues. So every time somebody rents that thing, it rents itself to somebody else, so I think it's a good deal.
Okay, Mayor, you got a report?
I've got two or three things I want to mention. Phase two environmental study for the old hospital should be completed next week. So as soon as we get that completed, the samples will be sent to EPA for analysis. It'll be July or early August before we get a complete rundown on it. At that particular point, we'll have to decide what we want to do, but we'll know what it's gonna cost at that point, hopefully. I think everybody's aware that the MapCo CEO will be here tomorrow morning at 10:30 to talk with us about the old MapCo Station. Route 21, they have closed quite a few stores. They closed one in Scottsboro. We did get word that Fort Payne was not on their list to close, that it would be staying open for the time being, so hopefully, that will last. Fiddler's Convention took place last Saturday. Had a pretty good crowd, but I bet there wasn't a dozen people from Fort Payne there. I hate this. One hardly anybody from Fort Payne there. Russell liked $815, paying for his trophies and prizes and what have you, which we supplemented that yesterday morning, so that got that done. We need to talk about that before next year comes around and try to... That's a good event, and I'm surprised that people don't want to at least come one time and see what's going on, you know? I've been several times, and I've always been impressed with the talent that's always there. We had a bill that we fought in Montgomery for this delivery, out-of-town delivery license. We lost on that bill. It got passed. And the thing that was... And the thing that was ridiculous in my standpoint, and I let everybody know it, a $10 penalty don't stop anybody from doing anything. And that was the penalty on this bill. If they don't get a license, I'll even charge them his $10, and 4% interest on that $10. So I don't know whether we even want to fool with these kind of licenses or not.
Threshold that they finally...
7,500.
How much?
7,500. Or 5,000 or 7,500, one or the other.
Above which you had to have a license?
Yeah, you didn't have to have one unless you put that much...did that much work, and then at 75,000, you had to get a full-fledged license.
Somebody comes in here and delivers a truckload of something, there's a great possibility they're delivering 5,000 or 75,000.
Yeah, yeah.
If that's one time, that ain't no big deal, but it's the over and over and over that would bother me if they exempted them. Yeah.
Well, you know, just like some of the furniture stores, the furniture that's sold in Fort Payne goes somewhere else, 90% of it shipped out. And we don't get the sales tax on that, and of course, where they ship it to should be collecting a business license, but now that this is a $10 penalty, they ain't going to collect anything. So, anyway, that's just a matter of information, you probably all knew that anyway. We had a fire alarm up here early one morning, back several weeks ago, and the key to the building was misplaced, or it was in a wrong location. So anyway, I got called, and Jimmy got called, and Stan got called to come in and let the fire department in so they could shut the alarm off. So Don and I talked, and he's got a box arrangement with a lot of businesses whereby it's kind of like a real estate lockbox that they keep at several larger businesses. So we were going to put one at this location and at the rec center so that the fire department could get in at any time, because they have a master key. Have those come in yet? I didn't...I didn't say...
We have to reestablish a point of contact for us. If we use a PO, we do it the way we normally do business, I'll have to reestablish our account. We never actually ever bought anything from the box box company. We always refer our customers to them, and maybe their own business. If we buy, we have to do the same way. We have to make application, all the things that a business can do, so currently in the process of doing it.
Rocky, the old building over here across from the...
Waiting on a lease on the Shire mortgage.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. Does anybody in our audience have any comments or questions for the council?
Do we have any more road meters that we don't know about?
We hope not. Sam?
The crosswalk downtown, those markers are $300. Y'all want to get one for each side of the walk, or one for the center? Y'all just want one marker or two?
Two. Two. One for the...
Did you get that email from them? That's the kind that you're planning on doing, or...
Yeah, that's...
I had a request to put a speed table in front of Builder's Fly. Randy was going to check on the accident data to see if it justified...
Well, they weren't.
Actually, we did, too. I thought I would present that to y'all, and y'all would see. If y'all want to think about that, look at it, and then let me know in the next couple meetings or something, if that's something that we want to do or not. Randy said he could check on the accident data to see if it justified.
The speed table in front of Builder's Fly. That's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else? Ron?
You deserve it.
Yep.
Proud of what we did.
Greg?
Send an email to each of you about the... Just to make sure that we...that's three weeks from Friday, so we've been sleeping on another. Mari's been working on some more. The acts, and we just need to...we need to schedule some, but we need to know what y'all were thinking.
I like the one you said, absolutely.
It's adding a couple more acts, and, you know, that's something that we talk about trying to clear every year, but it's going to be time to start working on the ads. We need to hear back from Hile to find out if there's going to be another sponsor, like there's been the last several years. So I just kind of wanted to make sure you had the lineup, what we were looking to do, before we proceed. I did talk to Dan yesterday about the sound equipment that'll be needed for the event. Got to get a price from him, too, so just want y'all to be aware.
Who's looking after the vendors?
Mike has, but we...I'll get with him, and I'll get the names off, and we'll just get the ones that we've had in the past. He's giving me one, but I'll get with the ones that we've had, since it's three weeks from Friday, so...
Is everybody good with that lineup that Mari has sent out to us?
Looks like a good use of people.
Yeah.
And acts.
Right.
Yeah.
Anybody else? I would like to remind all of our department heads, we had talked about when we...back when we changed the council meeting to the morning council meeting, and instead of a night council meeting, that we would have our work session downstairs, and that's where we'll be having our work session, is downstairs at 11:30, our meeting up here at 12:00. I know we came up here for a work session, that's when we had the login issue. We just want to make sure that everybody...the public knows that that's what we're doing. We're having our work session downstairs before...prior to the council meeting at 11:30, and that's when all the department heads come in and give their reports or their needs, so...
And a motion.
And a motion going executive session.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to go in executive session. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, we appreciate everybody coming. We are officially in executive session.